Just to clarify, point of clarification, we'll have to do every vote by roll call. So if you don't mind, I'll take that vote by roll call.
Perfect.
If that's okay?
Yes.
Okay. So to allow Ms. Denton to participate, Ms. Denton?
Yes.
Dr. Hubner? Mr. Cabarrus?
Yes.
Dr. Poor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, if we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. Okay. Looks like we are back online. So at this point, I am going to have Superintendent Thompson introduce us to Mrs. Melissa McDonald.
All right, good afternoon Hampstead School Board members and community members that attended. I appreciate, am excited with the opportunity that we have here before us this afternoon. I bumped into a community member this morning on my way in, and they said, "Why do you call a special meeting?" And I said, "Well, technically because it's not a regular meeting." So anytime you have a meeting, it's not scheduled, it is a special meeting. But I think actually that's the technical answer. The more symbolic, appropriate answer is, this is a special meeting because we, today, right here, if all goes as planned, we'll lock in our new leadership team. And I'm very excited. This has, there's been a lot of hard work that's been done this summer vetting candidates and getting to the place we're at today. And so I'm going to have the opportunity. Some have been approved, some you will approve tonight. And so I'm going to get started with an introduction. And I'm going to let the candidate introduce themselves, but of course I have to take advantage of the moment. So the first one is our new Director of Student Services. Her name is Melissa McDonald. The board did approve at their last special meeting Melissa's nomination. I can tell you, it's a small state, and educators in New Hampshire tend to know each other. And I know Mrs. McDonald when I served as the Assistant Superintendent for Student Services in Hollis Brookline. She was a colleague right next door in Milford, and so we were part of the same professional network. I had tremendous respect for the work that I've seen her do. It's also, to be fully transparent, I live in the town that she's been working. And she has a rock-solid reputation of putting the needs of students first, fiscal management, and helping to build systems, which is a lot of the work that our previous Director of Student Services did. And Melissa's totally going to build on that. So without further ado, and hopefully I didn't steal too much of her introduction, I'd like to introduce Melissa McDonald.
Thank you, good afternoon. As Superintendent Thompson said, my name is Melissa McDonald. I have served in many different capacities within the field of education over my career, starting as a Special Education Case Manager, all the way through now in, as an Assistant Director of Student Support Services, soon to be, as of next Thursday, Director of Student Services. So I'm excited to be here and to have the support of the community with my nomination. I'd be happy to answer any questions or just tell you a little bit more about my history in education, if you would like.
I'm curious about any experience you have in applying for grants and kind of managing those.
Yeah, of course. So within my role as Assistant Director over the past four years, I had the fortunate ability to have a wonderful mentor with the executive director I work with, who happened to have worked with the Department of Education previous to moving on to Milford. And so I worked alongside her through different grant managements, applying for, as well as updating. And that included various activities in up to positions that we had to work with the business office to make sure that we were including salary lines, benefits, retirement, and everything that goes under that. Just kind of creatively thinking of ways to bring more to the district through the use of grants.
Perfect. What's a success story you had with a student you'd like to share?
So it's funny, I actually think back to my first five years in my career, where I had, just as a case manager, a student came to me who had pretty significant dyslexia. And of course, coming out of college, you don't get that type of training, especially, you know, back in the 90s. And so I, it kind of molded the direction that I took in my career in, I actually had my master's as a reading and writing specialist because of this student. So I put myself through Orin Gillingham Training, I worked with the team, I collaborated with outside tutors, and he is now a very successful citizen, having graduated quite a few years ago. And I have periodically bumped into him, as well as his parents. And he graduated from college and has a very successful career. And although I've had a lot of opportunities along the path to make a difference in students' lives, that was the first one that really impacted me as an educator, and I have never forgotten it.
As somebody with dyslexia, that's awesome. Thank you.
Melissa Denton has her hand raised, she'd like to ask a question.
Perfect. Go ahead, Melissa.
Sorry for, if I sound awful. Congratulations.
Thank you.
How you plan to evaluate our intervention for special ed? And any plan to revamp it?
Intervention for special ed?
I think the question was, how do you plan to evaluate the interventions for special education?
Okay, sure. So once I officially start and I have a chance to dig in and see what has been going on and speak with the rest of the administrative team, that will help to evaluate where we are and where there may be some gaps that could be filled in. I don't want to misspeak to what has been, you know, happening over these past few years, but I'm certainly ready to roll my sleeves up and dig right in.
Great. Any other questions? Okay, well, on behalf of the board, we are delighted to meet you and, you know, looking forward to you rolling your sleeves up as soon as possible. So welcome to the district.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, moving along. So this is part of the official personnel report. And the first name I'm going to bring forward for the board's nomination is Charles Angwin. And Charles will serve as the Special Ed Administrator Coordinator at the Central School. As the board may recall, we have communicated that the special education resources at the Central School are strained. And in order to be more efficient, we need more leadership. We need somebody to build on the great work that is already started. We recognize that our operating budget is tight. So this is a position that is being fully funded through IDEA. Having a position like this be advertised this late in the year, I lacked the confidence to think that we would have qualified candidates. And then all of a sudden, Charles showed up with extensive leadership experience, special education experience, experience working for the benefit of at-risk kids, whether it's a foster program. And what I really appreciate about Charles is, we met here for an interview, and it was a very unconventional interview. We were sort of called over to the Central School. So myself and Melissa interviewed Charles, and it was, it was a sort of walk and talk. And what I really appreciated most was, here's Charles being peppered by both Melissa and I on some really heavy questions and doing a masterful job answering those questions. But also, we bumped into dozens of staff members, parents, kids, and to see Charles in action and how he interacted with the people he encountered, some of which he will be working very closely with, I think was the thing that sealed the deal for me. So I present Charles's nomination, but I'd also like to provide Charles the same opportunity as Melissa, to ask him to come forward and just introduce himself a little bit. Charles Angwin.
All right, thank you. Thank you for having me. A little about myself, education is my second career. I started my career off in social services as a residential, in residential, and then, as Bob said, in foster care. In my whole, during foster care, I was able to have the opportunity to be a part of IEP meetings. I didn't have really specialized background in special education, but being able to step up and be that advocate for parents really opened my eyes to the whole world of education. So right there and then, I quit my job, became a parent educator, my hands-on learner, wanted to be in it. So I became a parent educator while I got my master's in special ed. Then I was able to become a teacher, taught for a few years, and had the wonderful opportunity to become a coordinator in Hampton alongside Jessica Parsons, who I think you know. And she kind of led me into leadership and got my CAGS administration. And ever since then, I've always been in a leadership position. And I want to give kids what they need about the whole child. I didn't have a good background growing up in school, so I really want to make sure all students going forward have that opportunity that I didn't have. I'm pretty passionate about that. So, yeah, that's kind of a quick background of me. Any questions for me?
The fact that Jess recommended you is awesome.
Yeah, I left that out because I knew once Charles mentioned that. Yeah, yeah, it came, it was a very strong recommendation from Mrs. Parsons.
And then the same question that I had before, which is, what's an experience you had with a student that you're really proud of?
Yeah, I'm going to say it was my first year teaching, I was in Farmington. I was in charge of the behavioral program. I had about 15 kids on my caseload to start, and by the end of the year, I had three. It was really important for me to incorporate teaching to the teachers into that as well. So really giving them what they needed to work with these students in the classroom. So instead of having a program itself, which, you know, programs are important, but, you know, when I give the teachers the tools to work with students, you see the less of the need. And so really working as a collaborative team is always my approach. And that was a success story for me, my first year teaching. A little young buck, but, you know, I had to step up for what was important for the students. So going from 15 to three, for me, that was a huge, well, not just one student, but, you know, I helped many students, not only students, but teachers and staff. So I'm pretty proud of that.
That's really impressive. Thank you. All right. Rich or Missy, any questions?
Hi.
Hi, Missy.
I want to say congratulations to Charles. I'm just curious, why Hampstead?
Why Hampstead? That's a great question. I wasn't looking for a position, you know, but it popped up, it intrigued me. And then I did, after the interview process, it just felt honestly like home. And it felt like it's a district that cares for their students and will go above and beyond. So during that interview process, that kind of just hit home for me, is this is kind of where I want to be.
Awesome. I have one more question for Bob. Oh, sorry, Mr. Thompson.
Yeah, go for it.
Could you just, could you just explain to me, to people listening, what Charles will entail, roles and responsibilities?
Yeah, so we have a job description that essentially outlines the responsibilities. You know, I would say that, you know, sometimes you find the person, and the job evolves into, you know, what their strengths are. Essentially, you know, Charles will be the point person for special education at the Central School. That responsibility has fallen to a few different people, including our director, which has made it difficult to be both the building person and the person for the district. So, you know, Charles will supervise and evaluate special education staff. He will serve as the district's representative at special education meetings. He will work with our administrative team on the development of the strategic plan. He will work to ensure fidelity with our interventions. And above all else, and this is the thing I've recognized in Charles, his job is to advocate for, for students. So there'll be an evolution to, to the role as, you know, Charles sort of digs in.
Great. All right. At this point, I will make a motion to approve the nomination for Charles. You take roll call for that, Melissa.
Ms. Denton?
Yes.
Dr. Hubner?
Yes.
Mr. Cabarrus?
Yes.
Dr. Poor?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone.
Welcome to the district.
All right, next on the personnel report, I'd like to make the nomination for Amy Bernard to serve as the next principal of Hollis Brook, oh my God. I am, it's been a long day. Hampstead Middle School, you're definitely not working in Hollis, Amy, sorry. Yeah. I would just have to say that, you know, with the abrupt departure of Mrs. Millbury, I think we were all nervous that we were going to look for a principal, and we may not find anybody. And we actually ran two postings. One was for the regular position, and then one was for an interim. Within, I think, 24 hours, I think we had seven highly qualified people apply. We closed down the interim position. And in total, we had 13 people apply for the middle school principal position. That is extraordinary. That's extraordinary for any time of the year, let alone a late hire in July. And it speaks to something I think that Charles said in that I have heard before, which is, Hampstead is a destination school district for educators, for leaders. This is a place they want to come because of the values of the community and the education that we offer. So by the numbers, we had 13 highly qualified people apply for the position. We made the decision to ultimately interview seven of them. The committee was tasked with, the round one committee was tasked with narrowing that down as best they could to at least two. They struggled to do that. They identified four really fantastic candidates that came in. And for round two, which was a grueling process of multiple interviews with stakeholder groups, including parents, staff, students. There was a writing prompt, there was a superintendent interview that Mr. Dowd sat in on as well, a tour of the building. And it was in that round two that Amy really, really shined. She was the first interview that I conducted, and I was really impressed. I was excited to go after the interview and sit in on some of those stakeholder groups because, you know, I wanted to see if her messaging to me and her commitment to students and to leadership, if that was the same message that we would hear in those stakeholder groups. And it absolutely was. She elaborated on those answers. And I will admittedly say that at the conclusion of that process, I really was leaning towards Amy as the selection. And I, the last piece of the process, the decision-making for me, was I had to review the feedback of up close to 50 stakeholders. And I went into that thinking to myself, geez, I really hope, I'm really rooting for Amy on this. And the stakeholders 100% were in agreement about the strengths of Amy's leadership. She scored very favorably with all of the groups. And, you know, to hear some of the feedback in terms of, you know, her leadership, her commitment to students aligns very closely with the reference checks, both formal and informal. You know, her references describe her as somebody who is personable, committed to kids, willing to make difficult decisions, willing to stand up for what is right. So I'm excited tonight to present the nomination of Amy Bernard to serve as the next Hampstead, see, I said Hampstead this time, Hampstead Middle School Principal. So with further ado, for the interview process, I'd like to welcome Amy to the podium.
Hi, everybody.
Good evening.
Should I introduce myself, or?
Yes.
Yes, okay, all right. So I'll start by saying that I'm a lifelong resident of Hampstead. I grew up here, I'm a graduate of Hampstead Middle School myself. I spent 17 years in the classroom, teaching first, physical science to freshmen, and then continued on to teach chemistry. From there, I went on to be an Associate Dean of Students, first in the freshman academy. I was in charge of half of the, half of the kids in the freshman class. Me and my partner operated almost as building principals of the freshman academy. We worked very closely in teams with specialists, counseling, the teachers, to support students in a wraparound manner. From there, I was asked by my administration to move to the senior office. So I became the Associate Dean of Students of half of the senior class, which was really great because it gave me the opportunity to really experience the total operation of the school. I got a chance to orchestrate planned graduation. I also was more involved in safety in terms of transportation, parking lot safety, things of that nature. And I also got to get involved in alternative programs for students in terms of getting them to graduation. So from there, when I saw this opportunity arise, it, it just jumped out at me as something that I was called to do. So it's truly an honor to stand here before all of you, and I just really thank you for that opportunity.
Right. At this point, we will move forward with some interview questions. Carl, if you want to kick us off based on the list here? So, living in the community has awesome benefits, especially if you've been in it for a while, but there's also challenges. How do you plan on navigating your role as principal, knowing that individuals you supervise could be your family, friends, neighbors, and you have a lot of experience with them?
So obviously, that's a consideration, and I did think on that before applying. But honestly, for me, it's natural. I served as a member of the Pinkerton community for 22 years, and so I had the same exact conflicts. I had my, our daughter just graduated from Pinkerton this past year. So she was a student at Pinkerton for four years alongside me, and I, she was on my caseload. So I'm a professional. I don't see any issues with, you know, anybody that I am close to working here or being a member of the community. In fact, I see it as an asset. I truly appreciate and, you know, have so much love for what happens here at this school. And I'm just really excited to be able to contribute to it. You're welcome.
Do you want to ask your second question, or should we?
All right, we'll spread, we'll spread the wealth here. All right. All right. So I'm curious, what your experience is with creating and managing annual budgets in a school setting? How do you plan to prioritize and manage staff requests while balancing the overall fiscal impact of the town?
So I'm going to be honest with you and say that budgeting, school budgeting, wasn't really a part of my prior position at Pinkerton. That said, I did have an opportunity as a faculty member to manage some budgets for the science department. I also managed a budget for the cross-country team that I was a head coach of for 20 years. So I am familiar with budgets and fundraising and those types of things. I'm a quick learner, and as a former chemistry teacher, I'm a numbers person. So I'm actually excited to get back to numbers a little bit in that way. In terms of the second piece of your question and how to manage staff requests and, and all of those pieces, I think it's about, you know, taking time to make decisions, being an active listener, hearing what people are asking for, and then just kind of evaluating how that fits in with the priorities of the school district.
Great, thanks. Do you want to ask your question?
Yeah. So in order for a school to really improve, there needs to be a culture of high expectations that needs to be kind of pervasive across the school community. How do you plan in your first 90 days to approach assessing the existing state of affairs and make necessary improvements?
That's a great question. I think a lot has to happen in 90 days. You know, this is a brand-new place for me in many ways, but also I am a community member, and I've had two, two kids come through the school district. So I think I have a unique understanding of what's going on here already. That said, I would take some time to sort of sit back and observe, and then also listen to my faculty and staff and try to gather information from all the stakeholders in the community, because we are a team, to try to come up with areas of need and then just attack them one by one. It's a slow process, things don't happen overnight, but try to prioritize the needs of the community.
Sure, go for it.
So to that, you know, if you decide that, you know, some changes need to be made, change is hard. How do you coach a staff member who is reluctant to change?
So I think that it's about letting that person tell me how they're feeling, right? So I would welcome them to, you know, give me their feedback and listen to what they have to say. And then it's about explaining the position that I'm coming from and, you know, give them all the information. So I think it's just about open communication and then sort of explaining what the vision is, right? Because it's one thing to say what the, you know, what we're doing in the moment, but it's another thing to explain how that's connected to the total picture.
Missy, did you want to ask a question?
Yeah, there's just a slight delay.
And how have you implemented it in a previous role?
I didn't catch that.
Yep, she broke up a little bit.
What is your understanding of MTSS framework? And how have you implemented it in a previous role?
So I think I have a wealth of knowledge when it comes to MTSS. I actually attended a series of conferences a couple of years ago in Concord through the Department of Education related to MTSS. Also, I was involved in a committee at Pinkerton, looking at what we were doing there and trying to make improvements. One task that I took on with a small group was actually sort of revising our in-school support room and trying to make it more restorative. So I've been working on that for the past couple of years. In addition to that, I serve on our student support team for seniors. So I have looked at, like, seniors that are struggling, what supports we can give to them, and whether that is academic struggling or it might be behavioral. So I have a lot of experience coming from Pinkerton in that area.
Can you just give a quick explanation of what MTSS is for people that may not know?
So it's a, it's a series of support. So you identify areas of need in terms of, like, when you have behaviors, how to address those behaviors, and then how to put a plan in place to sort of educate students and correct those behaviors. But MTSS also has to do with academics. So it's not just with, you know, trying to support students behaviorally, but also academically. So there's sort of two branches to MTSS.
And kind of tied to behavior, but really, I know you're probably aware of some of the issues that we're dealing with at the middle school just in general, of, you know, perhaps some issues with bullying, perhaps some issues with vaping. So my question really revolves around how you go about shifting school culture, both from a staff and a student perspective.
So you've identified two major areas that every school, district, and the nation is dealing with, right? When we're talking about bullying, social media, and also vaping. I mean, those are massive issues across our country, right? So I think we all know that, and I don't think that anybody here, faculty, staff, would argue that those are issues that we need to work on and correct and that we can take measures immediately. and that we can take measures immediately to start to combat those things. So, I think that that's going to be an easy sell for our faculty and staff, that we need to make some changes and try to attack that problem head-on. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, I'm just curious if, you know, maybe you have some strategies possibly to share of how you go about shifting school culture.
Okay, with respect to changing?
Student behavior accountability, those types of things.
So, I think it's about sharing some of my experiences in terms of what worked and sharing, you know, stories about how we've been able to change different things, you know, in my past experiences. And then, also trying things, making some changes, and then seeing the results and the benefits from that. So, I think it's, you know, about dealing with a situation and having everybody around us see that that is actually, it's working. I don't know if I answered your question again?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
Carl, Missy, Rich, any other questions?
I have one more. So, strength of your leadership is on the working to support students with discipline and behavior management. What can the board expect regarding, and also your staff, regarding your leadership on instruction? Like, what do you feel like is important and what's your strength? What are your, you know, what do you want to see in the building?
So, I feel really lucky and fortunate that I was able to spend 17 years in the classroom. I think that allowed me to see a lot. And I'm not going to say I saw every scenario with every student, but I've been through a lot in the classroom. And I'm excited to be able to share those experiences and help to mentor teachers because of the experiences that I had. So, first of all, that, I think, gives me a unique skill set, you know, as a leader. And then, in addition to that, you know, even though my role at Pinkerton was largely around student conduct and attendance, I also was involved in, you know, teacher evaluation, looking at the curriculum of different disciplines across the school. And so, I, you know, am sort of dialed into different curriculums in terms of, you know, social studies, English, math, and so I can bring that here as well. You're welcome.
All right. At this point, we, oh, great. Missy, go ahead.
Sorry, one last question. Just bouncing off the culture. I'm just curious, how would you go about building positive relationships with students? And staff?
So, the first thing I want to do is I want to put myself out there and I want to meet people. So, I'm really excited to be in a smaller community. This is something that really kind of was one of the reasons that this position really called to me. I think it's going to be, in some ways, similar to being in the freshman academy and working very closely with teachers and teams and students. And so, this is even more tight-knit than that. So, I'm planning on being out as much as possible. I plan on trying to meet as many students, bring them in my office before there is any sort of discipline issues, just to connect with them. And the same to teachers. I'm planning on trying to meet each teacher where they're at and talk to them about their concerns, what's working, what I could do to support them. And in this small community, I think this really gives me that opportunity to really get to know people and what they need and then help support them so they can thrive.
Great. I appreciate you letting us pepper you with all those questions. I know that's not easy to do, so thanks. At this point, we are going to go into non-public. I will make a motion to go into non-public to allow us to deliberate and make a decision. And then, we'll come out of non-public and share our decisions. So, I will make a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91A3, matters which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the public body itself.
Second.
All right.
So, for the motion for non-public, Ms. Denton?
Yes.
Dr. Hebner?
Yes.
Mr. Cabarrus?
Yes.
Dr. Poor?
Yes.
Thank you. Time is 4:45 PM.
Yeah, thank you for making that perfectly clear.
People's minds at home.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion on the table, seconded by Dr. Poor, to seal the minutes. Ms. Denton? Dr. Hebner?
Yes.
Mr. Cabarrus?
Yes.
Dr. Poor?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I am delighted to make a motion to approve the nomination for the middle school principal of Amy Bernard.
Second.
We take roll call, please.
Any discussion before I take roll call? Go right into roll call?
Missy, any discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion.
Ms. Denton? Dr. Hebner? Mr. Cabarrus?
Yes.
And Dr. Poor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, congratulations.
All right. Other business, old business from any of the board members? Okay, at this time, we will adjourn at 5:12 PM. Thank you all.
Thank you. Good night.